Good point.
Christmas time. Okay, thank you. Good evening, everybody. I'll open the Newton Planning Board public meeting for Tuesday, December 14th. We have all regular members here, and we have a quorum. And we have Mr. Moran and Ms. White joining us via Zoom. And that is it.
And Bob's going to take whose place?
Oh, yeah, you're in all that. I forgot. You're always here. I'm thinking. Mr. Moran in the place of Mr. White. Thank you.
Our shot.
Okay. First thing on the agenda, Circuit Rider Jennifer Rowden overview of the steps for the land use chapter of the master plan.
Sure. So I'm gonna share my screen so everybody's looking at the same thing. And I will start this by cautioning, this is a draft. I have not talked to the master plan committee about this. So this is not getting into the areas where we'll probably have more discussion. This is just an overview of sort of where it's being drafted for now. And then I'd like to have a little bit of a discussion about the outreach component that we did sort of put into the contract that we have with you to write the chapter, but then also do an outreach event meeting, something to that effect. So the table of contents you're seeing is just sort of the basic information we put in most chapters. So we give background, we give some land use connection to planning regulations so that your average reader can understand how the master plan land use regulations sort of play out with zoning, compatibility with zoning, it's a little more background, just how the land use ordinances themselves. So it's primarily going to be your zoning districts that we give sort of an overview of this is what the zone is intended to do. These are some of the uses intended to be there. This is the look and feel that is described. These are some of the limitations of those zoning. So your residential A, B, and C, your commercial, your commercial light industrial, your village district, and then some of the overlays for groundwater and wetland being described within there. We talk about future land use. That's going to be really that crux where we're going to take information from the survey results, but also the public discussion we may have from an outreach event to sort of bring that in as some of the, not only where is land use going in Newton that we can give you quantitative information on, but then that qualitative piece of what do the residents actually want it to be going forward or want to keep it as. Little bit of a conclusion, and we'll have recommendations, and then having the land use components of the implementation. And that, obviously, depending on how the implementation table that I know that you've been working on as the master plan committee is laid out, will basically fit the land use component into it so that as you're building your implementation plan, we'll tailor it as sort of a dual use. And then appendices will be, some of the more heavy data, the maps, that tends to be what we'll put in appendices to not overload the document itself. The main idea will be to keep it short enough that it doesn't become a dissertation, but not so, but not so light that it has no heft to it. You still want to have information in there. So it's balancing those two for readability and usability, but also not nothing. So just to kind of give you an idea of what it's sort of looking for texturally, I'm not going to get into everything it says, but it gives a background of, you know, what Newton is, sort of your land use over time. And I'm going to bring up some maps in a minute to give you an idea. We have the historical land use that you've had. We actually have a table that has all of the maps. I'm going to show you in a few minutes about how land use has changed from 1962 to 2015. 2015 is the latest land use data that we have. It is unlikely that before the end of this project, we will get the updated land use maps. There may be new maps in 2022 or early 2023. If that happens, that's very easy to then insert the numbers into the table. It's unlikely it would change dramatically. The numbers will shift a little bit, but not in a trend, sort of a way. One thing we do tend to do is, most towns like to know what their neighbors are doing. So we tend to put in from surrounding towns that have some similar characteristics, either just because of their geography, or their size, or land use development, you know, where do you stand in land use change compared to your neighbors? You know, you, so Newton is the little dotted line here. You are on the same trajectory of open space that many of your neighboring communities are, in that it's a general downward trend because the seacoast area of New Hampshire is a desirable place to live. So therefore, there has been an increase in development. So more development, less open space. Similar is residential use. And these are the same communities that are being compared. So we are consistent about that throughout. So you're seeing sort of the same trends. Again, you've increased sort of that late 80s, early 90s, which was very common in New Hampshire and southern New Hampshire specifically. And it's sort of tapered off that sort of the general migration patterns we're seeing for New Hampshire. Although this does not clearly take into effect any COVID migration that has occurred and may shift going forward with shifts in where people can be employed. So we will get down into, and I won't go through all of these because you guys are fairly familiar with your zoning districts, but these are the residential districts we're detailing right now. I have directed my staff to also do a little bit with your environmental overlay districts, your groundwater, your wetlands, just so that you'll be able to have some idea of where your wetlands are. We've got some existing maps that we're able to put in, where your aquifer is, that's your existing aquifer protection district is all of your stratified drift aquifers in Newton. But on top of that, we can also put the wellhead protection area. So that's the, basically, the area around any public water supply well. That is also considered a protected area, but your groundwater resources don't specifically speak to protections of those. I apologize for people online for the fast scrolling. I do talk about a little bit about the different residential options that you do have. And you've had quite a few over the years of cluster development. The one off of Kingsley Corner Road is probably the most recent example that you've had of an open space cluster development, where basically you preserve open space, but you allow slightly higher density of the buildings than where you typically would. And then your elderly overlay district, obviously, we have a fairly high amount of 55-plus developments in Newton, just how that has been an encouraged use in Newton. And whether it should be going forward in the future is always a question that gets brought up with land use and most municipalities in Stanage, particularly effective since you're on the mass border and it's a prime area. So those are the main aspects. As you can see, where it says future land use, we have not written anything because we need to pull in more public data. We have pulled out some of the more common responses or data points from the survey that speak to future land use or the common themes in some of the quotes. So we have pulled out a little bit of that. But working on that will sort of be the area where the most discussion will need to happen with the master plan committee, the planning board as a whole, and then input from the residents.
Jen, in the future land use, like you mentioned with the COVID shifts, that brings up a, or a question for me, the COVID shifts and the future trends. Is that, is that looked at like, okay, this is what we have up till now? This is what we see happening?
So it certainly can be looked at. I don't know that we will have enough data by the time that this is concluded to give a solid answer. I can't give you a numeric. This is the number of people that will stay in Newton and be able to work virtually forever. I can't tell you that.
I'm thinking more, a little bit COVID because that brought things up, but just future trends. And I'm not talking about like going all the way to like a build-out analysis. However, like if, there's a certain momentum coming into the latest data that you have.
Yes.
Has it ever looked at, say, okay, with this momentum, this is where we see the trend going?
Yes. So right now, we do have population projections that go out to 2040, might be 2041 at this point. Those projections will be updated with the 2020 census data, which should give us some. And that is not going to fully answer the COVID, just because of the timing of that. But putting in statements like, you know, because of the impacts that COVID has had to people commuting in Newton's proximity to Boston, might make a shift in the demand that is in Newton. You know, you might see a population increase simply because you're a southern municipality on the mass border. So therefore, there's the tax benefit, but also the proximity to Boston without living in Boston and the easy commute potentially if you needed to. So I mean, we can certainly talk about things that need to be on the top of people's mind. This chapter should not be your chapter for the next 20 years. This should be your chapter for the next five years, but you should look at it every year. And then maybe at five years, consider, oh, maybe we need to just update the data.
Will, will the, we discussed before, you know, the results of the census data? And when it comes to, one, when are you going to be putting yours together for the, you know, out to 40 years and then, or 2040, I guess? And then will that, do you envision that being in here? I think you said that some of that would be in here.
Yeah. So the projections that are currently done are done at the state level. But yeah, we do have the 2020 census data. The projections typically, the Office of Strategic, sorry, the Office of Planning and Development, they've shifted bureaus over the years, usually comes out with that during sort of the early spring. So we'll use the best available data. And if it, if, you know, we get something in July and we've just finished up with you in June, we can put the new table in.
Okay.
That kind of information swap isn't really a...
And I know you're going to be, I assume you're going to be having this discussion with the, with the subcommittee and all that. So I don't want to take up, I just have one because I got you guys here. With this future trend, just for, let me call it that, is there enough information that comes in that could give us a reasonable look to say, okay, like if we wanted to change or modify some of the zoning, like we're saying, okay, this is the trend that we have, but the residents are saying this is kind of what they want. Is there enough data in this by itself to start giving you information if we wanted to address something like that?
So changing zoning is not usually that clean cut.
Mm-hmm. Yes.
So will we have data that can be used to help you make decisions about your zoning? Yes. Should you make your zoning solely based on that data? No.
Okay. That's a good answer. Thank you.
But just so people have an idea of what this is going to look like as far as some of the maps, I just wanted to bring you up an example. So give me just a second, and I will share that aspect. All right. So this is your aerial photo. This is actually 2020 aerial photos. We have slightly more up to date. I think there's 2020 aerial photos that we'll be getting soon. Or they may have been early 2021. So this is your land use in 1962. I'm not going to get into what all of the colors mean, but basically, the light green is undeveloped. The red, brown is more commercial, industrial, and the darker green and light orange are residential or mixed use. So 1962, 1974, 1998, 2000, 2005, I'm sorry, yeah, 2010, and 2015. So I'm going to go through that a little bit quickly so you can just sort of see it. We sometimes will do these as videos, but, so this is 1962, 1974, 1998, 2000, 2005, 2015. So as you can see, in the last 50 years, you have developed a lot. But you still have a lot of green spaces and some water area that don't show up on the first map. So there are still open spaces in Newton. So how you want to go forward with your zoning will definitely impact your community in the next 50 years from now.
Okay.
So the main thing that I did want to get the whole board's input on, but I do have to have a conversation with the master plan committee, is the timing of an outreach event. So right now, our contract is through June. We need to do some work with the master plan committee to sort of draft the chapter a little bit more before having an outreach event. Because you want to have people have the ability to react to something. You want them to react to some draft goals or actions that you may want to put forward to get their feedback, because you'll get richer feedback that way. Going, so that will take at least two months. So really, realistically, it won't happen until at least January to start that. January, February. Having an outreach event, and we can do this in a number of ways. We could do a survey, again, that sort of people can react to like that. That can be a companion to actually having an in-person event. We could try to have a hybrid event, depending on COVID status at that point. Maybe it won't even be a factor. So thinking an outreach event somewhere around the first part of April, the very end of March, that also gets you past sort of the attention that town meeting will bring. So you get past that aspect. And then anybody that maybe is new to any of the boards in town also has the opportunity to catch up to speed about what the planning board is working on and then provide their input in that capacity. So that was just the timing piece, if people were feeling comfortable that generally.
That timing piece sounds about right. Also gives a chance for snowbirds to come back and, you know, that kind of thing. So.
Yeah, I think that, I think that makes sense. Let me know if anybody on Zoom is raising their hands or... So does that work? So, and the committee, the subcommittee will work on it more, but some, so we'll be looking at something like eight.
Yeah, we can come up with the specifics, but a general.
It doesn't sound like we have anything to do. We'll just, you know, yeah, we'll be working on it.
I will say the, the general arc or process that usually takes is that I can work with the subcommittee to working on the sort of draft goals, actions. You know, I'll give you some initial ones to react to, too, just because that's sometimes easier for you to react to something, so that we can have the outreach event in sort of that early April, late May, or late March timeframe. But then it will need to come back to the full planning board after that outreach event has been digested and incorporated into any draft chapter that we have for then the full planning board to consider. Probably early May would be about the time for that to work.
Okay. So we have, we have a meeting on May 10. You're talking about that's when you'd bring it back to the full board?
Yeah. Well, yeah, at some point, probably May 10 is a reasonable date to shoot for.
That sounds about right. Yeah.
Because then you would have to move it, you'd have to comment on it. You'd have to, if you're amenable at that point, you can move it to public hearing. But that would be for the full board.
Okay.
And that is all I have unless folks have questions.
Okay.
That's a good start.
Excuse me. Any questions from board, knowing that the subcommittee will?
Looking forward to seeing the future use.
Anything, I don't see anything from Zoom. So, all right. Thank you very much, Jen.
Not at all.
Looking good and exciting. Where's my, here we go. Okay, reviewing the language for the potential capital improvements warrant article. And I know there was one, just one issue of it doesn't go to the selectmen. So do we have the, there we go. Okay.
So you can take that line off. Basically, this, just for review purposes, in order to do a CIP, a capital improvement plan, we need to be authorized by the voters to do so. So this is to, this is an authorization which will stand not just for this capital improvement plan, but for ongoing updates and so forth. So it'll, it'll incorporate that. And it's appointing the planning board. Bob and I both went to the board of selectmen meeting and discussed with them, the CIP. They prefer that we do it. And they will give us support and make sure that any departments or groups or whatever in town all respond. The selectmen will, you know, exert their influence to help us to get the information that they'd like us to put it together. So this is, has to be, this language is basically right out of the RSA.
Okay. And this language, excuse me, gives us, so it's an ongoing?
Yeah.
It just like never ends until the?
Till there's another warrant article and they say, tired of them doing this.
Okay. All right. So you ready, Jim? I assume we need a motion to adopt the language. I see you're...
Motion to adopt the language first, and then, and then we're going to vote on it? Is that in two different votes? Is that it?
No, you could, you could do a motion to present the warrant article as drafted.
Okay. I'm going to make a motion to recommend the warrant article as drafted.
Second. You got everything you need on that, Jim?
Excuse me?
Do you have everything you need? I just, I saw you working on something.
I'm just, where you want it to be perpetual. I'm trying to figure out where we can put a word in here, because somebody could actually interpret.
Make it a little bit larger. I'm having a hard time seeing it from this angle. Ah, good. Thank you. See, the amend, the amend part takes on the ongoing.
Well, amend could be just the, you prepare it and then amend it before you present it. Prepare and...
Because it's a program and not a specific plan document, that's what allows you to do it in perpetuity.
Okay. Okay. I just didn't want somebody to be able to look at this and go, once you did one, that's all we gave you the permission to do. That's what we're trying to get away from.
Right.
So it'll be so state of the minute that we understand that this is ongoing. So at least we'll have that. Okay.
Mike, this is Barbara. May I say something?
Yes, please.
Yes. Okay. I think maybe you should, we should add into here that they're going to, it's, because it's supposed to be reviewed yearly. That CIP is supposed to be done every year. So maybe somewhere it needs to have, hang on a second, let me just take a look at this.
Annually amend?
You know, and maybe after where it says the RSA numbers say, you know, do, to be reviewed every year, or reviewed annually, because that's what it's supposed to be done. It's in the RSA's that the planning board is supposed to be doing the CIP, and it's supposed to be done annually.
That sounds good. Barbara, Annie mentioned something. I don't think you heard it, Jim, or somebody put it in there.
I just did.
Oh, Jen just did. How about right at the, in the first line where, shall the voters of Newton authorize the planning board to annually prepare and amend a recommended program?
Or to prepare and annually amend, either way.
Or to?
To prepare and annually amend.
Oh, that makes sense.
Okay. So move the annually.
Yeah, because it is, it is, it should be updated annually.
Okay, yeah. So to prepare and annually amend.
Right. And later on, going forward for this, I have a suggested way, a suggested way that the report could look that might be less confusing than the last time we tried to do this with the departments.
Okay.
So you can take a look at it and see what you think. I mean, maybe you like it, maybe you won't.
Okay. Well, that'd be very valuable. But as long as we get this through the voters, then we'll definitely look at that. Thank you, Barbara.
Luckily, there's no money attached to it.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, at least that helps somewhat.
My one, my one point of confusion that some people may have is how it ends, where it says as provided for. Some people might say, well, if it's already provided for in a New Hampshire provision, why do we need to vote on it? So is there a way to amend that language where we can say as?
In accordance with.
In accordance with, yeah.
Good.
Yeah.
Yeah. That's good.
I just don't want some smart answers.
Yeah. Well, it's hard because on the, I lived in a non-SB2 town for years where you could, you'd discuss this stuff.
Oh, wow.
With all the voters, and there wasn't, you cleared up misconceptions. We don't have that ability really, because nobody ever shows up to the deliberations, actually. Okay. So.
Except once in a while.
Is your motion happy with this language?
My motion is very happy.
Okay.
And your second?
Second.
And everybody else is good with it? Okay. Thank you very much, Barbara. And when you're ready, Jim, call the board.
Mr. Andrews?
Aye.
Ms. Collier?
Aye.
Ms. White?
Aye.
Mr. Lavoy?
Aye.
Mr. Ford is not here. Mr. Moran? Mr. Moran?
He's muted.
His volume's not working.
Oh. I think he gave me a thumbs up.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes.
Aye. Sorry. I switched my microphones out with you.
Mr. Mashon?
Aye.
That's unanimous.
Okay, thank you.
I will, I'm assuming that that is to take it to a public, that the vote is also to take it to a public hearing?
Yes.
Prior to, it'll be the first meeting in January.
Yeah. Yep.
Oh, okay. So I thought that this was our public hearing.
No, can't do it that way.
Okay.
No, it actually has to go on an advertised public hearing.
Oh, okay.
And you have to have the language to be able to do that.
I just remember discussing that it had to be done earlier than a lot of them. So, and that we talked about having it in December, but...
Can we have a motion to take it to public hearing?
Oh.
I can make a motion to have it in a public hearing?
Okay.
I'll second.
And that'll be on January 12th.
Okay.
Which also means you can't change it, because there is, there won't be enough time for a second public hearing.
January 11th, yeah.
I'm seeing January 11th, 2022.
Okay.
On your nice calendar, you print it out here.
No, not a problem. Mr. Andrews?
Aye.
Ms. Collier?
Aye.
Ms. White?
Aye.
Mr. Lavoy?
Aye.
Mr. Moran?
Aye.
Mr. Mashon?
Aye.
That's unanimous.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Under that, so on to board business, acceptance of the minutes from our meeting of November 9.
I'd like to move to accept those minutes of November 9.
Okay.
I'll second. This is Barbara.
Okay, we have a second from Barbara. Any questions, corrections? Okay, Jim, please.
Mr. Andrews?
Aye.
Ms. Collier?
Aye.
Ms. White?
Aye.
Mr. Lavoy?
Aye.
Mr. Moran?
Aye.
Mr. Mashon?
Aye.
That's unanimous.
Okay, thank you. Next, I think here is the approval to pay the NEPR manifest in the amount total of $190.41. I could have a motion to pay, please?
Don't move. This is Barbara.
Thank you, Barbara.
I'll second.
And for Annie.
Mr. Andrews?
Aye.
Ms. Collier?
Aye.
Ms. White?
Aye.
Mr. Lavoy?
Aye.
Mr. Moran?
Aye.
Mr. Mashon?
Aye.
That's unanimous.
Okay, thank you.
Mike, can I ask you a question?
Please do.
I know we, I know we voted and seconded for the capital improvements warrant article, but did we actually do the vote from everybody?
I think so.
I didn't hear the end of her question.
Did we actually do the vote for the two votes on the capital improvements?
Yes.
Yeah, we did that.
Yes. Yeah, we did. Thank you, Barbara, for checking.
Thank you.
We did not do a vote to recommend at this point.
Recommend what?
That warrant article. We're going to do that in January.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, you can't do that in January. I mean, it was kind of part of the statement, but...
Yeah. I kind of thought it was when we approved it, we recommended it, but...
I think so, too.
However the legal is.
We did, we did two separate motions. That way, when I hand the bill to the bookkeeper, I have minutes that show that I was authorized to place that ad.
Yes, I remember that.
Right. And we were talking about that, you know, the line that says the planning board approves this.
Oh.
That was, my feeling was that was under... That was, my feeling was that was understood in that vote because the wording had the planning board approve.
Actually, that vote occurs after the public hearing.
Oh, oh, because we might learn something different.
We gotta hear from the public.
Yeah, you, you could have, you know, 200 people in the room, you know, with torches and pitchforks.
No.
Obviously, yeah, always happens.
I have a use for them if we get them, but.
We got the NEPR, we got minutes, okay, adoption of the 2022 meeting schedule.
As I explained last week, there, we will be losing another meeting at some point once the Secretary of State decides when the primary will be.
Oh, that's right, okay, so not just that November meeting, but somewhere, yeah, okay, all right.
Okay, I'd like to move to approve.
Okay.
Or adopt.
Adopt.
Any discussion, questions, complaints?
Was that Mr. Lavoy that seconded?
Yes.
Thank you.
Tuesday, the December 27th looks a little unfriendly, but.
Yes.
We had a, that was a discussion and it was, I was convinced that we should leave it on the schedule. I'm still not 100% convinced, so since you brought it up.
I'd like to take it off the schedule. I do not intend to be there, I bet we wouldn't have a quorum.
So I'm sure we could, I could probably get from everybody in the room a reason why we shouldn't have that. So I want to let, just Jim or and Jen, if you have anything, any concerns of why we might not want to remove that from the schedule?
The only thing is that you have to have a meeting every 30 days. As long as it meets that criteria, you're good.
So we just need to have one by January 13th.
Well, the following year would be, would be January 10th. Just because you lose, you lose a day each year, so in '23 it would be January 10th, so it'd be okay.
It's up to meetings on January 11th.
Yeah, but in 2023, it'd be on the 10th.
Oh, got it.
Right.
Oh, wow, yeah, okay.
So that means the three.
I want you to tell me anything, any reason.
The only two things that I could think of, and it's, I mean, this is one of those perpetuals. One is if something happens and the first meeting in December doesn't happen, you're then, you know, you at least have a fallback date.
Can I make a suggestion? Maybe we can just keep it on there and if it's not a necessary thing, you could always cancel it as long as we've had the first meeting in December.
You mean kind of like this December's meeting coming up?
Yeah.
It's, it's a lot easier to cancel a meeting than to try to schedule in a new meeting.
That, for the board, that's why I was convinced to leave it in. My only complaint was that is then it allows applicants to say, oh, then I will squeeze an applicant in here to get in, but.
To be honest with you, the applications come in with no rhyme or reason, and when they come in, I then look at it and go, okay, you hit the deadline for this particular meeting. They don't, I've yet to see anybody who goes, you know, when's the deadline? Oh, can I make it in time?
Okay, so. I know you probably won't be here next year, but. So we have a motion and a second to adopt as printed. And I'll keep with that motion, so if there's no further discussion, go ahead.
Mr. Andrews?
Aye.
Ms. Collier?
Aye.
Ms. White?
Aye.
Ms. Lavoy?
Aye.
Mr. Moran?
Aye.
And Mr. Mashon?
Aye.
That's unanimous.
Okay, that's the main board business. I'm just going to talk about one more thing, our next meeting, which, I don't even know what the.
December 28th.
December 28th. We don't have any public meeting scheduled, so my view is I'm going to go ahead and cancel that. I have one question for you, Jim. Is there any possibility, and I don't know if we can even do this legally, I've done it on other boards, is there any possibility that anything comes in that has to be signed for as like something like a NEPR manifest? And if there is the possibility, and I'm going to point this to Jen also, does the board have the approval to allow me to sign even if they didn't see a NEPR manifest?
The NEPR account has been reconciled through the end of the year.
Okay.
There is nothing further that will, that will happen on that, on that stage. Anything that comes in between now and the end of the year will be for the 2022 calendar year. So there'll be no more NEPR manifests. There are, I cannot think of anything that is outstanding that has to be signed for. It's a lot of end of the year cleanup. So there's nothing.
Okay.
There were, there were no petition warrant articles, so everything is.
Okay, Jen, I know you're not legal counsel, so don't, I'm not holding you to this. Have you heard of anything like that being in any of the towns you represent? Meaning, hey, we'll give the chair approval to sign.
Some towns will do like, if they don't want the whole board to sign a MYLR, they'll give at an annual organization meeting, the chair of the authorization to sign final MYLR so the entire board doesn't have to do it. So you can, you can do that kind of thing.
Okay, which I heard it, which we do.
Yeah.
Which brings up, do we ever have to bring that vote up? I know that's just been the vote from, I don't know how long ago. And you haven't ever seen it for like last minute bills coming in or?
Every town handles their bills differently. You guys are unique in that the planning board approves them, to be honest.
Yeah, the, the standard operating budget bills I handle.
Yeah.
The, like I said, NEPR is reconciled for the end of the year.
Okay.
The only, I do have a set of MYLRs that we've discussed and they cannot be signed until the documentation comes in.
Yeah, and when that comes in, I already have the authority to, to sign it, so, okay.
So we had one other thing, which was the outstanding balance, year-end balance. Where do we stand on that as far as how much money? Because we were going to see whether we wanted to apply some of it towards our land use bill that we will have due.
You already did that.
No, we did it once, but we were going to revisit it to see what the end was because we, we did 3,000, but there could be another 1,500 in there, we thought.
Quite honestly, you, at this point, you cannot know, the Board of Selectmen has passed its date for encumbrance.
Yeah, when we had that.
If they don't encumber, we would. It's our, it's our money, not theirs.
Oh, okay.
I mean, we had planned, we had planned when we discussed it before.
Yes, we did.
Because we had a contract in place.
Yeah, but then, maybe it was a discussion I had with the selectman. I don't know, there was something that came up and I can't remember it right now. That was like, okay, that's the way it has to stand.
Well, that's unfortunate that we didn't know that at the time when we made that decision because we have, you know, money that we could apply towards that.
I, if you want to hold a couple of seconds, I can print out the latest budget balance sheet.
You don't even need to print it, you can just tell us, it's okay with me.
I'd have to check, it's on the other.
Okay.
Okay, before you do that, is, say there's going to be $1,500 left.
Right.
Do we have the, I know we have the authority, whether we have the time or not, to say we want to encumber those, and I do believe, this is one of those where the selectmen do get involved, at least I think they do, that we can actually encumber them.
You can do that on the 28th, it does have to be publicly. You can't at the end of a meeting. Say you're going to encumber funds that has, that was not on, on an agenda.
Okay. You guys could have a special meeting that, a time that four of you can gather.
I think when we discuss this.
Would you like me to go see exactly how much there'll be?
Well, I know there's going to be enough, but the, the point there is kind of moot for trying to bring this in to encumber it. I thought there was the feeling of keeping the stable kind of budgeting through the year, then maybe that was the discussion that came up with the select.
Well, I, I don't remember it that way. What I remember is that we looked at paying as much as possible this year out of the balance.
Yes.
And we decided 3,000 was safe and we would take a look at, as we got towards the end of the year to see how much was left. So it's something that we said we were going to do. I think, I really think we should do it. I think it's, I think it's kind of, it's something that we said we would do.
Well, we can't do it without having appropriate notification and another meeting. And even if we did, would that meeting, if we did hold the meeting on the 28th, or would that be enough time for bookkeeping and all that?
That I honestly wouldn't be able to check tonight, but I can go let you know what there'll be left of the budget at the end of the year.
Okay.
So I'd like to. A recommendation that if there's money left, which it sounds like there will be, you guys find a time that you could, four of you at least could meet for 20 minutes in the next few days. I mean, it just has to be a public agenda, so it's only a 24-hour notice.
Okay.
So we don't have to wait all the way till the 28th?
Okay.
I'm itching to get out after Thursday.
What'd you say, Dennis?
I said I'm itching to get out of my house after Thursday.
Yeah, I will be gone for, at least for a few days, starting Thursday or Friday, but then I'll be back next week.
I'm gone starting tomorrow.
You're going when?
Starting tomorrow.
Starting tomorrow?
I'll be back here for one day on Monday, or not Monday, on Tuesday, next Tuesday, but that's it. And then I'm, I'm in Arkansas for the rest of the year.
Okay. I mean, in all honesty, for, if that's the entire point of the meeting, you only need a quorum and it doesn't have to be a long meeting.
Well, on my few people, this town is my life, so I will be.
All right, if, say, are you going to be here Tuesday night?
Next Tuesday? No, my flight is on Tuesday night, so I, I won't be here that night. I can be here during the day, but my flight is at 5:00 out of Manchester.
I'm sorry, what flight, when?
My flight's at 5:00 next Tuesday.
Okay, so if we did something at noon on the 21st?
I can't do noon. Sorry, guys, I'm just, that's what I'm meeting with the pastor for my wedding. So if we do, I can do 11 to 12.
Okay.
I could do 3:00, can you do 3?
No, I can't do that afternoon after 2.
I'm subbing that day.
What are you looking for, the week after Christmas?
No, before.
No, right now, we're looking at the week of, like, the, the 21st because Mark's going to be leaving and then gone.
What are, what's your time that you're available? I, I know you told, it's usually one time, but what is the, what's the range?
So I could do 8 to 10 in the morning. I could do 11 to 12, and then I can do 1, 1 to 2 on the 21st.
I should be back the night of the 20th, so I can do anything.
Okay, on the 20th.
You can do anything, we'll assume.
On the 21st.
Are you talking about next Tuesday?
Yes.
Yes.
I am not available at all next Tuesday during the day.
Do we need you there?
You just need someone to take the minutes.
You would need somebody to, I mean, I can post it, but.
Yeah.
Okay, so it's going to be, it's going to be roughly a five-minute meeting.
Yeah, well, we have Dennis and Barbara. Dennis, could you make, are you going to be here next Tuesday?
I am, and I am free before 2:30.
Before 2:30?
So anytime before 2:30.
Okay, so that sounds like.
Sounds like it could be.
We at least got 1, 2, 3, 4, so you're the strictest, so what's the best time for you?
I would like to do, I mean, I can neither do before, the best times for me are before 10 or 11 to 12.
Before 10, can you make it before 10, Dennis? 9:30?
Yep.
Can we do 9?
Yeah.
Let's do 9. 9 on the 21st.
Okay, I will do my best to phone in. I will not be able to be here physically because I'm going to be at the high school.
Well, it's, when you do the notice, will it still have a Zoom? I don't know how to do that, so.
Yeah, well.
We'll have you, you can phone in.
You can just phone, I'll just phone, I'll phone you.
Not even necessary.
I'll call your phone, yeah, if you have a quorum, then you'll be fine.
Yeah.
What, what time did you sub?
9:00 AM on the 21st.
Thank you, I'm sorry, I won't be, I'm sorry to be difficult about it.
It's okay.
From the looks of things, you've got probably, you definitely have 1,400, you might have 1,500.
Okay, the positive of 1,400 works for me unless I hear a positive 1,500 by.
I would actually have to, my numbers are through the beginning of this month, so I would have to look at what we've done for payroll and just double check with the bookkeeper if anything else has been.
We don't need to cut it that close, how about?
No, 1,400.
Do you think like 1,300 or something?
And that is to go towards the land use chapter?
Can you?
On top of what was already approved, right?
Yes.
Yeah, just one thing that would be useful for me to have is just a vote that you want to amend the contract so we could write up a letter just for billing purposes.
And we can do that?
Right now.
Now? It wasn't on the agenda. That's the problem with planning board stuff, everything has to be other.
It's other business.
But.
It's a, it's a lot nicer to the public if, yes, we're going to amend the contract and pay down a bill, then, you know, out of the blue, we're going, you can't encumber money without warning people.
Yeah. So we're paying an already approved bill through the full open process. So I feel comfortable with if we make a motion to, what was it?
amend the contract.
You want to prepay the additional 3,000 remaining by 1,400. So there's $3,000 remaining you haven't paid, so you want to pay, do a payment of 1,400 towards that $3,000.
With 2021 funds.
Bill. Right.
So give me just a couple of some good wording here.
No, we just got a, I just got a memo from the bookkeeper. I want to make sure that there's still another selectman's manifest so that it can be paid. Anything that, what, any bill that wasn't in by a certain date would go, would come out of next year's budget, so let me double check.
Okay.
Thank you.
It gets really confusing when you get towards the end of the year, the way towns.
It's just, we just said we were going to do it, that's why I wanted to bring it up.
So from my end, what I would do is write up basically an amendment to the contract. We'll sign it, we'll ask you to sign it.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm not sure if I saw on the selectman's agenda for this past previous Tuesday if they had what he was asking about checking on.
I don't know, I was in.
A manifest?
Part of the meeting, but.
Yeah, closing out the bills.
I know there was a lot of discussion and then they were throwing out a lot of dates. That's what'd be nice if our ex officio could.
Yes.
Come to a meeting.
Let's see if I can pull that up. Doopie 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 doo, planning board. No, it would be in the other one.
Do you think the minutes are posted yet for the Board of Selectmen?
Uh, no, it's only through December 1st that they're posted.
Okay, you were just looking that up?
Yeah.
Jim's checking his email.
By the way, I took, I did do that Nickaram thing that got sent out.
You what?
The thing that Nick sent out? The thing that NICA sent out for the budget for the school. They had that survey.
Oh, yeah. Oh, good, good.
I did that, too.
Newton Board of Selectmen Agenda. Read more.
How'd you like the tremendous growth they're expecting?
I approve cabinet, contractor renewal, police department review, government, review general government budget, building needs, payroll encumbrances, vendor bill, warrant, facilities maintenance, sealed bid, schedule.
You have until the 21st.
21st is the...
And we're meeting on the 21st, so end of day, the 21st?
They have...
The final vendor bill manifest for 2021 will be processed on Tuesdays, December 21st. Please remit all 2021 bills to me no later than 6:00 PM on Monday, the 20th. Any invoices received after this time will be applied to the 2022 year.
Okay, so let's look at the 20th. We know Mark can't.
I won't be back in town till like midnight.
Midday on the 20th?
Midnight, probably. It'll be it. Yeah, I'm having to do a round trip down to New York and...
Can you guys do this Thursday or Friday?
Sure.
I could.
You could anywhere. Actually, if we do it early, I could.
I'd happy to be doing it early. Can Dennis? Can Barbara?
If you do it Friday between 8:00 and 10:00 o'clock in the morning, I could do it.
How about Thursday? I can't do it Friday. Dennis, are you available Thursday?
I can't do it Thursday.
Okay, how about Dennis?
Yes, and earlier the better on Thursday.
9:00 Thursday?
I can do Thursday, but only before 9:00. 8 to 9:00.
8 to 9:00?
In the morning.
So I'm going to take 8:30?
I can do 8:30.
You're going to be around Thursday morning that early?
I will have to... I will be at the high school. I'll call.
Okay. Well, calling doesn't, because we just need a quorum here. But Dennis, you can make it 8:30 this Thursday? All right. Does that give... What's today, Tuesday? Does that give enough? Notice just has to be 24 hours with us?
Yeah, 24 hours.
Yes. I'll do the notice tonight.
Okay.
Thanks.
Well, at least that'll give you then on... Well, you have a workday Thursday.
Right.
After this. I don't imagine you'll be here at 8:30. You might, I don't know.
I can if you'd like me to be. However, it means that I'll leave at like 4:00 in the afternoon.
Yeah. Well, you're... It tried your own hours in a sense, so I'll leave that... Just you'll have time to get everything written that needs to then be submitted.
Exactly.
All I care about. Okay.
Okay, so that's 8:30 this Thursday?
8:30 this Thursday.
I just want to make sure that we all shouldn't take 30 this Thursday.
Okay, and we have 1, 2, 3, and Dennis, so we have...
No, I can't make it at 8:30 in the morning. I would have to be late or in the day.
Are you serious?
We're not going to be able to do this.
And Barbara, you can't make it Thursday. It would have to be Friday for you.
It would have to be Friday between 8:00 and 10:00.
I'm not here Friday. I'm in New York on Friday.
So I'm just... Could Larry maybe make it at 8:30?
I can't depend on...
Okay.
Larry at all?
I can do Thursday. You can't do Thursday at all?
In the afternoon, I can.
I can do Thursday in the afternoon after...
Mike can't, right?
I can if I have to.
After what time?
After 1:00. I can do 1:00 to 4:00.
Dennis?
And then...
If we could do 2:30, that would be perfect.
Dennis, it's Thursday.
I can do it if it's the only time available. I have to go from here to Portsmouth, Portsmouth to here, then back to Portsmouth, but I can do it.
Well...
1:00?
If you do 2:30, I can physically do it.
I can't do... I can do like 1:15. I have a call that ends at 1:00.
Yeah.
Okay. The earlier is better.
Right, well, that's why I was trying to think of Mark, but 1:15 works.
Okay. You know.
I will see where I'm assigned at the school.
Dennis, 1:15 Thursday?
Sure, sure.
Okay.
And Jim will be here.
Yeah.
And what I'm going to ask for you is if you find out that you can make it, and as soon as you can, not only let me know, but let Dennis know, because it appears that Dennis is going to be in Portsmouth, coming back here and back to Portsmouth, and if we can save him from that trip.
I will arrange. I'll arrange with the school that they cover whatever they have for me.
Okay.
I'll arrange. I'll be here.
Oh, you will?
Yeah, I'll be here.
Okay, so we got 4 right here at 1:15.
So that's 1:15 on Thursday?
1:15 on this Thursday.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, you could just make a motion to pay $1,400 from the present operating budget towards the land use chapter.
By now?
There's not... I don't see that as being an ethics question.
I thought we needed to give 24 hours notice.
That's only if you need to have another meeting.
That's if we encumbered, but we're not encumbering. We can just pay.
You're not encumbering anything.
Oh, my God. Why didn't we figure this out earlier? That was... While I'm listening, I kept raising my hand. When you see this...
I always call on you when I see you. Okay, all right, so...
Okay, I'd like to make a motion.
Make a motion and repeat what she's making the motion for, please.
Someone needs to move to pay $1,400 from the present operating budget towards the land use chapter contract with the RPC.
So move.
Second.
Okay. Jen, does that work for you?
That's fine by me. I'll try to get you a signature sign Thursday at 1:15.
Tonight before I leave, I'll send a net, an email saying, "Please send me another bill."
Okay. Is there anything I need to sign?
Excuse me?
Is there anything that I need to sign and have approval to sign, or is it all just through the office?
You already signed and witnessed the original contract. This'll pay it down that much further.
All right.
Oh, right.
Who made the motion?
I did.
Annie made the motion.
And Barbara seconded.
Barbara seconded. Annie further.
I'm going to throw out all the rest about the encumbrance. I'm not going to try to figure that mischievous into the...
Now, everybody's off the hook.
So you need to call the roll, right?
Right. Mr. Andrews?
Aye.
Ms. Collier?
Aye.
Ms. White?
Aye.
Mr. Lavoy?[1771.98]